Let's call a Human Resources Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Whopper.
The agenda is proposed.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Jacobs.
Mr. Jacobs has arrived as well.
Call to me, Jacobs. Good to see you. Thank you. It's good to be seen.
I have a motion on the agenda. I have a second. A second. I have a second. Okay. We have a motion, a second on the agenda. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Today, if somebody would just take the first two, we'll get those out of the way first.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from Community Development Director to initiate the civil service process to fill a specialist position in the Community Development Department and to make an appointment from said civil service list. And secondly, a request from Community Development Director to initiate the civil service process to fill the Community Development Coordinator position and make an appointment from said list.
Second. We have a motion on us. Second on this. Any questions on this?
Can we just have an overview on what these positions are, what they do, that type of thing?
Rudy Jones, Community Development Director. The first position of Community Development Coordinator is the position that oversees most of our financial accountability, our home regulations, which is a little more stringent in terms of regulations than our CDBG. So they kind of work hand in hand. And the project specialist was one that was kind of the backup of NACI in doing some of the financial management, the financial drawdowns, and some of the environmental review requirements.
So neither one of these are NACI replacements, is that correct?
Yes. The coordinator is NACI's replacement. And Danielle, who was the project specialist, was the one that filled in for NACI in our absence with drawdowns, getting into the IDIS system, which is our financial accountability system.
Rudy, hasn't your budget been going down pretty dramatically over the last several years?
It has. Last year, got a little bump, but on the average, over the last five, 10 years, it has been going down.
So as we're doing less than in the community, would that be an appropriate statement? Because we have less money?
Not really, because over the last few years, we've been able to supplement and backfill a lot of our funds with the lead grant, which we just applied for last week. So if we get the lead grant, we'll be able to maintain the past levels of funding, which primarily is the owner-occupied rehabilitation, where we do between 25 and 30 units a year. What we've done less of is money for outside agency, those kinds of services, that we're doing less and less of.
And how long have these positions been open?
How long? About three, going into four weeks now.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none? I need a roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes. Okay, that motion's passed. So I'm going to take item number three, please.
Mr. Chairman. Number three is a request by Human Resources Department for authorization to begin recruitment process for Public Works Director and make appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this request. Any discussion here?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lind.
I move we table this indefinitely because we're in the middle of discussions about reorganizing the city department structure. And this would be one of the key departments that we would need a different type of individual in.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to table this. Jim, did you want to address this?
Jim Roodermeier, Human Resources Director. We would like to start the process, because it's going to be probably a three-month process in order to get the advertisement out there, get the applicants, and then go through the selection process, or at least through the interview process. So if nothing else, we would like to start this process. We have incorporated the sign and traffic and animal control departments under the Public Works Department. They weren't previously under that department. So there is a slight change to the job description.
Mr. Lind, would you agree to begin the process but not make an appointment, so we could at least get the process started?
Yeah, then I would move to... Well, we have to vote on this first. Let me withdraw my proposal, and I will move to begin the recruitment process. Just to begin recruitment process.
Okay, are we doing that correctly? Or does Mr. Amos need to withdraw?
Let's... You could withdraw your motion, and then we make an amendment to the original motion to strike out and make appointment, if you don't want to do the appointment right now.
Jerome, if you would do that.
Yes. Okay, I'll amend the motion that I made to request... The amendment would be request by Human Resources Department for authorization to begin recruitment process for Public Works Director.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this request. Now, is there any discussion?
So, Mr. Jim, I just want to back up a little bit, because quite frankly, I'm a little confused. So we thought that we were going to research this or look into it. The mayor said there's a group looking at efficiencies and structure and trying to see, if we can do things better, let's do them better. And so I thought that's what you were going for, Tom. But now I hear we're going to start the recruitment process before we even know if we really need this position or how this position might look in the future. What sense does that make?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Roodermeier, would this even be on here in Human Resources if we did not, the mayor and yourself feel that this is a position that needs to be filled?
Excuse me. I certainly believe it needs to be filled. I think there's been a discussion that Mr. Rice was leaving, and I believe we had a discussion during the budget process that we needed to get this process going and get the position filled.
So we're saying it could be 90 days before we would even be able to find someone?
Most likely, the interview process or that recruitment process will last six weeks to three months.
Well, Mr. Chairman, based on Mr. Jacobs' comments, let me make a motion again to amend tables.
Hold on a second. So we already have the motion on the table to amend. So that would either need to be withdrawn, or we would need to vote on that first.
Which amendment?
Mr. Amos' amendment to strike make appointment.
I just left off the "and make appointment" aspect of it.
Yep. So first, we need to handle that motion, and then, depending on how that goes, either table, make a motion to table, or go back and deal with the original motion that was listed on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morrissey.
Just a question for Mr. Roodermeier. Would the amended statement here, just to begin the process, would that cause any kind of difficulty with what needs to be done at this point in time?
I don't believe so. I think the city council and the mayor could continue to have a discussion about, you know, future reorganizations, but at this time, we do need to get the process started, I believe.
Okay, thanks.
So I have another question, Mr. Chairman. All right. So when you're putting this out to the... Wherever you put it out, into the public works world of the country, does it have to be defined what that position is, or is that flexible?
It's somewhat flexible, but it's defined in terms of how we're currently structured. Basically, there are only, I would say, two components of normal... Some public works departments that aren't under here, and that would be the City Engineering Department and the Wastewater Department. Other than that, all of our, what we normally or traditionally would be called public works divisions or departments are under this position.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead. Whoever.
I guess the question that I had was, is when we're looking at this particular thing, a public works director, when you talk about a public works director and reorganization, in my mind, you would still need someone directing that regardless as far as what the rest of the organization part of it would be. You know, I'm just, from a standpoint of, what I'm hearing is eliminating the public works director position. Whereas for me, when I look at this, I'm looking at it from a standpoint of the public works director is a position that needs to be there, and then the rest of the organization part of it comes below or within that public works director's realm.
Okay. Who spoke over here? Oh, Mr. Jacobs.
So, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Roodermeier. So what I heard last week, what the mayor said, we're looking into the efficiencies and studies, and Mr. Schmidt's looking at some information. So how is it fair to the applicants if we don't even know what we're looking for, or we don't even really know what that position might be down the road, the duties, the job description, that kind of thing? Shouldn't we figure that out first, before we go out and advertise, start the recruiting process? As we looked at wastewater last week, we even made the offer before the council even had a chance to vote on it. So it kind of puts us in a precarious position, in my point. So wouldn't it make better sense to table this, give us a chance to look at it, and then see exactly what it is that we want to have, then go recruit that with that information, then start the recruiting process?
Like I said, I believe our current public works department is structured along the same lines as most traditional public works departments. You can always reorganize at a later time. I think those things are somewhat fluid. We would just like to get the process started, because it is going to be a lengthy process. We're going to have an interim director in there for a fairly lengthy period of time, and I'm not sure if that's the way you want it to go.
Well, let me ask you this, then. Is the interim director capable of directing?
For a short period of time, yes.
Okay. So we have it covered for now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I've got... I have a motion and a second on beginning the process without making an appointment. So either he has to withdraw his motion.
Oh, we need to vote on that.
Or vote on it. I'm not going to withdraw. Okay. So then I'll need a roll call, please.
Can you repeat the motion that we're going to deal with? Sorry.
The motion would be a motion to amend by removing the language and make appointment from the original motion. So you're seeking, but you're not making an appointment.
We're just removing the last two words from the motion.
Start the process.
Right. Okay. Then we need a roll call, then, please.
Okay. Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Four to three, yes. No. No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes.
So the motion passes. So we still have to... Okay, so you motioned to amend, so now we need to go back and approve the emotion... Approve the motion as amended.
The new motion.
Yep. So you approved changing the language, so now you have to approve the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request by Human Resources Department for authorization to begin recruitment process for the Public Works Director.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the request. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none? We need a roll call, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion and a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Let's call our Finance Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Whopper?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of minutes of March 27, 2017, as proposed and agenda.
Second. We motion a second on the agenda and minutes. Any questions on either one of those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass. Travel requests, we have three today.
Mr. Chairman, we have travel request for John Martin, Rehabilitation Specialist, to attend the Foundation and HUD Environmental Review, Denver, Colorado, April 24 through 28, not to exceed $1,825. Matt Chessmore, Rehabilitation Relocation Specialist, Foundation and HUD Environmental Review, Denver, Colorado, April 24 to 28, not to exceed $1,825. Dust Gitterpole to attend the 2017 National Cyber Crime Conference, Norwood, Massachusetts, April 23 to 27 of 2017, not to exceed $2,633.
Bruce, if you would, why don't you take number four also?
We also have the refund request in amount of $428.83 for garbage fees billed and air for property located at 2141 Logan Avenue.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the first four items. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those four are approved. Pre-oths?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I take pre-authorizations to expend over $1,000. Building maintenance, the amount, and estimated shipping and handling of $4,426.75. This expenditure is the troubleshoot, the BFD, variable frequency drives at the Waterloo Public Library. These are services, the amount with estimated shipping and handling, NTE, $3,000. Final grading at log drop site at the east end of Falls Avenue. Plan and zoning, amount, and estimated shipping and handling of $1,280. This expenditure is for the proper assessment, testing, and documentation of asbestos-containing material, ACM, within the structures at Project Site 120 Center. Police Department, the amount, and estimated shipping and handling of $4,531.35. Expenditure, professional liability insurance for the Tri-County Drug Task Force. Police Department, again, amount, and estimated shipping and handling of $1,657.50. Purchase, $25,200 cop cars. Sewer Department, amount, and estimated shipping and handling of $17,980.52. And this expenditure is a boiler retube, refactoring, floor replacement burner, head cleaning, and gasket for boiler number two.
Okay.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the pre-oths. Any questions on any of those items?
I do have one question on the Tri-County. The insurance cost, is that only our portion, or is that other agencies' portion as well?
Captain Joe Lively, Waterloo Police. That's for the whole task force, so they're insured separately from the city as a whole. Okay, they have their own insurance.
But they're contributing. We're not paying.
Yeah, well, it comes out of Tri-County Task Force funds.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. And we have five budget line item amendments, which are unfiled at the city clerk's office, and also the bill's payment this week. That's 2,474,802.46. Second. Motion and a second on the bill's payment. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The bills are paid.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment?
Second.
Motion and a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
All right, welcome this evening to our city council meeting, 5:30. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Wupper?
Here.
All right, we have a full council this evening. Right now, we have our invocation or prayer for the evening, which will be led by Reverend Daniel Voight, Associate Pastor for Westminster Presbyterian Church. If you would please step to the podium. It is your right to stand or sit as you choose.
Let us pray. Holy God, the ground of our being, we give thanks for this day. We give thanks for our lives, we give thanks for our work. Give thanks particularly especially in this place for the employees and volunteers of Waterloo who give selflessly for the benefit of others. For they, we give thanks for those who choose to serve with their lives, giving a blessing to all those who are served by them. Lord, these are the people that make Waterloo Waterloo a truly wonderful place to live. I pray especially for those in leadership, that they would be able to discern the most important matters of what needs to be dealt with. May they have discussions with wisdom and make their decisions with wisdom. May they lead with integrity and may they respect everyone. May they see through their own bias, which is an impossible task, but I pray it anyway. May they vote their conscience and may they disagree at moments, maybe with themselves, maybe with their party, maybe with their friends. And may they also rejoice when they find themselves confronted by opposing opinions, so that they would be forced into seeking a new way, a third way, a way that is best for all of the citizens of Waterloo. Holy God, I know that these people, fine people here, work way too hard and hear way more criticism than they do complaints. So I will close by hoping that their fire and their passion for doing the job that they signed up for might be rekindled and that their reward, if it comes by no other means, would at least be through a sense that they did the best they could with the gifts they had and on the issues and tasks they faced. Holy God, may you and may those who come after them forgive them for their errors and may you bless the works of our hands. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now we have a special guest with an S that will help come on, lead us in the pledge. So if you, if you gentlemen want to come forward. It's a Midwest High School Hockey League Champions, the Waterloo Warriors, so if you want to spread along and. Think you may have to keep sliding. All right, we'll follow you in the pledge.
United States of America, and to the great public for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of March 27, 2017 regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. First up on our day today, we have several different proclamations we will be doing this evening. And the first one is a proclamation on sexual assault awareness month. Alicia Smiley and others, would you please join me up front?
Just me too.
And others, okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, the proclamation reads, whereas sexual assault affects women, children and men of all racial, cultural and economic backgrounds, whereas in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorders, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders and suicide. And whereas sexual assault is devastating not only to the survival survivor, but also for the family and friends of the victims of survivors. And whereas since no one person, organization, agency or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault. Support victims, survivors and their families as well as support those agencies providing services to victims and survivors. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor for the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2017 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and encourage all of our citizens to learn more about preventing sexual violence. So very special month. Alicia, could you please tell us a little bit about what's going on and?
Definitely, thank you. My name is Alicia Smiley, I'm the Iowa Program Director with Riverview Center. So here in town, Black Hawk County and 13 other counties in northeast Iowa, Riverview offers free and confidential services to anyone affected by sexual violence. So not just the victims and survivors themselves, but also any support people that are trying to help them day in and day out. We are staff of 22 in Iowa, advocates, therapists and prevention educators that anyone can call any of our offices day and night and our phones will be answered by an advocate. We have agreements with the hospitals in our region that they will call us no matter what if somebody presents as a sexual assault victim and we will offer services and help them through that process. And then if they want support when they're reporting to law enforcement, then we can stay with them during that process also. What else? We thank you so much for your support, Mayor Hart and the City of Waterloo. This is a passion of ours. We have many, many activities, fundraisers, awareness events going on this month across our region, a lot at U and I, on campus, and then of course in town. So, thank you so much.
All right, two, two quick things, but one, where can someone find more information about what's happening?
You can find information about Riverview Center on, on the web, www.riverviewcenter.org. Or you can call our local office at 319-939-9599.
All right, thank you so much. And I think when you said 22 people serving across the state, I think you have to have a lot of partners. And mentioning the proclamation is community activists, community people, the police departments, but you need a, a very aware group of people working together so that we can solve this challenge that we have today. So thank you for your advocacy and we look forward to seeing you some other time as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I would like to call up Stacy Hess right now. And this is a proclamation for Crime Victims Rights Week. So Stacy, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right, whereas Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year affecting individuals and communities. And whereas providing victims with knowledge of their rights and available services further strengthens their ability to recover by restoring their sense of self empowerment. And whereas trauma-informed response to victims promotes healing and fosters strength in survivors. Whereas unaddressed trauma from victimization weakens the resilience of victims and their communities, impeding their ability to withstand future trauma. And whereas victims who feel understood and supported are more likely to disclose their victimization, seek services and participate in the justice process. And whereas a multidisciplinary response involving collaboration among victim service professionals, criminal justice officials, legal professionals, medical and mental health providers and community leaders is essential to reach and serve all victims, especially those who are marginalized and have disabilities or live in remote locations. And whereas strengthening the multidisciplinary response, bringing diverse skills, perspectives and understanding together in the services of victims, also serves to build the resilience of the responders by strengthening their confidence in their roles, abilities and sense of contribution. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 2nd through the 8th, 2017, provide an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach and serve, are afforded their rights and receive a trauma-informed response. And whereas the City of Waterloo is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victims responders and working for justice for all victims and survivors. So, Miss Stacy, can you please tell us about Victims Rights, Rights Week and some of the activities you may have ready for us?
Sure, the, the main activity that we have is going on Wednesday at the Women's Center for Change from the Department of Corrections at 1515 Lafayette. This will be an event to highlight the importance of recognizing victims' rights in the Cedar Valley and throughout the state. It will recognize crime victims throughout the state, victims of homicide and other violent crimes. And we will also have an honored guest, Denise Timmons, from the Iowa Attorney General's Office, to give us information about human trafficking in the state of Iowa. This event is open to the public, it is free, and it will start at 9:00 AM, again at the Women's Center for Change at 1515 Lafayette this Wednesday. This event is sponsored by the Cedar Valley Coalition Against Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault, which is a conglomeration, it's a multidisciplinary team that tries to better serve the community and improve the quality of services that we give to victims and ensure safety of all residents in the Cedar Valley.
And I'm sorry, I should've said Officer Hessy as well. So, thank you for your advocacy, thank you for your support and helping people with some of the challenges within crimes that take place within our community. So, thank you. Now, we have a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I would like to call up none other than our very own Larry Schallenberg. And others. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas the City of Waterloo applauds the Exchange Club of Waterloo and the Sunrise Exchange Club of Waterloo for their dedicated work in the prevention of child abuse in our community. And whereas the City of Waterloo commends the Exchange Club of Waterloo and the Sunrise Exchange Club of Waterloo for, for its tireless promotion of ongoing programs in our community which are designed to help prevent child abuse. And whereas the City of Waterloo stands firmly on the side of prevention of any type of abuse and believes no child should endure verbal, emotional or physical abuse for any reason. And whereas the National Exchange Club adopted the prevention of child abuse as its national project in 1979 in response to a request by its national president, who, as a physician, noticed an increase in abuse cases in his medical practice. And whereas the City of Waterloo supports and encourages all of our residents and community leaders to wear blue each Monday in April in observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month. And let me see, there's a little bit, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the City of Waterloo in recognition of our commitment to help happy children and to help eradicate child abuse in our community, to support the efforts of the Exchange Club of Waterloo and all others who observe this important cause in their mission to bring awareness of this tragic problem to the forefront and to help make our community a stronger and more loving city where children will be able to grow and thrive without fear of harm. So Larry, you have some guests with you, but can you tell us a little bit about this proclamation?
As you just heard, the National Exchange, National Project is prevention of child abuse. Family and Children's Council here in Waterloo has several programs that assist people and who have been abusers or are possibly going to be abusers. And we, the Exchange Clubs, Sunrise and Waterloo Exchange Club, are very proud to help the Family and Children's Council work, do their work to help prevent child abuse. It's a serious problem, as these two young ladies standing, standing beside me know, they work for Family and Children's Council and both happen to be Exchange Club members. So, we just want to make sure that everybody knows it's a problem and we're working to solve it.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much Larry for your advocacy. Thank all of you for your advocacy and making sure that every child has a healthy and happy home. So thank you. I think this is your turn. Our next proclamation is Limb Loss Awareness Month. And Steve Houson, Houson?
Yes.
I guess I got it right when I heard, there it is. All right, come on up, sir. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas there are approximately 2 million Americans living with limb loss difference. And whereas over 500 Americans lose a limb every day and 1,000 babies are born each year in the United States with congenital limb difference. And whereas diabetes and peripheral vascular disease are the leading causes of limb loss, followed closely by trauma. And whereas studies show up to 60% of limb loss is preventable. And whereas the number of amputations per day will double by 2050 unless a major public awareness campaign is launched and key prevention initiatives put in place. And whereas appropriate access to care for people affected by limb loss is vital to enable individuals to reach their full potential, live independently and live well with limb loss. And whereas the Amputative Coalition provides education, outreach and advocacy through the National Limb Loss Resource Center for the benefits of persons with limb loss difference, their families and healthcare providers. And whereas April is National Limb Loss Awareness Month as spring is a time of renewal and inspiration. The City of Waterloo encourages all citizens to join recognizing the importance of this month and celebrate people affected by limb loss and limb difference, living full and productive lives. Learn about issues affecting people with limb loss, express gratitude to family and caregivers who are a source of support and motivation. And salute combat and veteran amputees who have lost their limbs in service to this country or in retirement. So Steve, very important, very important cause. Can you tell us a little bit about this proclamation more in depth?
Sure, thank you very much for, for making this proclamation today. In 2014, there was over 1,200 amputations that occurred in the state of Iowa, of which I was one. It's become a mission of mine to, to learn a little bit more about and advocate on behalf of the limb loss community. There is a lot of good care out there for people that are suffering from limb loss, but there are still many challenges. And those challenges occur mainly in the, in the bureaucracy, our government agencies, mainly at the federal level and also with our insurance providers. There are really, really neat high-tech prosthetic devices out there that can allow a person to live a very normal life, but there are several barriers to access a lot of that high-tech prosthetic care. And that is something that we're working very hard to, to try to remove a lot of those barriers. It's just important that from the, you know, from the grassroots and our communities, that we bring this to the forefront so people are aware of it. So, I thank you for the proclamation today and the City of Waterloo, thank you.
All right, and thank you Steve for all you've done and for your advocacy and support. So we, we just appreciate all you're doing for our community. Anything else we can do, please let us know. All right, thank you. All right, now I would like to call up the Midwest High School Hockey League Champions, the Waterloo Warriors with Coach Brian Cook, so that we can present you and that you can be recognized for your recent championship season.
Come on up there.
Come on up here. Come on. You got the championship hockey team, we got the championship council up here.
We do. Are you gonna do something about university?
That's your fault.
I was, I was, I got here late as a lad, so.
That's not you guys.
Okay, you guys aren't doing that yet.
Other shoe, you were gonna say something about us having rain today.
No.
You guys wanna open up, I think there's someone that wants to take a picture.
Congratulations.
But Coach, this is a certificate of achievement, it's not nearly as large as the one you have right there, but it's a certificate of achievement presented to the Waterloo Warriors 2017 hockey team by the City of Waterloo on this third day of April 2017 in recognition of your dedication and hard work in winning the 2017 Midwest High School Hockey League Championship. Our community, our community is proud of Coach Brian Cook and the entire Waterloo Warriors hockey, school hockey team in attaining this championship. So Coach, tell us, tell us what's going on and what happened over the course of this year.
Well, we had a very strong year, we have a very strong core of seniors and we dedicated our year to a senior that is not part of us. He had a, he passed away last year, Kurt Reedy, and we kind of dedicated the past two years towards him and this year it really worked out for us, winning the state championship. Waterloo has had a very strong tradition in ice hockey in the Midwest League and the Iowa High School League. And this championship actually got us to the point where our community, Waterloo, has won the most state championships or tied for the most state championships along with Des Moines. So we're really proud of that. We have players from Waterloo West, Waterloo East, couple from Columbus. That's okay though.
I don't worry.
Yeah, are they part of Waterloo?
My wife went.
Oh geez, that's all right.
My baby, my, my wife.
My wife went to Cedar Falls, I mean, come on now. So, I know. But and, and also surrounding communities like Laporte, Independence, Denver, but we're very proud of this team. Probably weren't 100% expected to win this championship, but we finished the, the year with a 15-game winning streak, which is, you know, we got a longer winning streak than the, than any of the other teams in the, in the nation, or not the nation, but in the league. And we're really proud of that, taking into next year. And this gentleman here, Cade Sagling, he scored the game-winning goal on the penalty shot with about a minute and a half left. And then where's Sturci at? Dawson, Dawson Sturci, West High Waterloo. He was, he was the tournament MVP. Only gave up two goals in the last two games, one goal each, which is pretty good. And he came away with a tournament MVP trophy, so we're very proud of that. And the smiles have not left our faces, to be honest with you. Okay, so, and we really appreciate you guys honoring us, everyone, today. It's, it's a great honor.
All right, thank you Coach. I feel like putting my hand in here. But we want to thank you for being a fine young man, fine young examples of hard work, dedication, education as well. Keep up the good work, we look forward to great things next year from all of you as well. So thank you for being with us today to share a little bit of this honor that. So thank you for being with us today to share a little bit of this honor that you won with the first place in the tournament. So, thank you fellas. Okay, we have Wanted, Blackhawk County Residence for Safe. Okay, Lindsey Anderson from Waste Track Recycling. Would you please come, oh, you're already here. So you must have talked to Kelly and she said, "Once I start battling, then come on up." All right, so Lindsey, why don't you tell us about what's going on?
Certainly. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. I am one of the two educators with the Waste Track Education Team, so I'm a county conservation board employee, but I'm funded through tipping fees through the Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission. This Saturday is the big day, this Saturday from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM, they will be hosting, holding their household hazardous materials and electronics recycling drop-off event. So if you want a flyer, there's some up there by the door, if I didn't get you already. This event is hosted by the City of Waterloo and we're very thankful for the opportunity to use your Waterloo wastewater treatment plant facility. I've got a nice setup there, some nice buildings, we can have a drive-through drop-off event. So if it's raining like it is today, folks that come out to that and all the volunteers that'll be helping that day will be nice and dry, so thank you for the use of your facility. The event is from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM, it's open to all Blackhawk County residents to bring out household hazardous materials as well as electric and electronic devices that they would like to recycle that day. This event, the, the two types of materials that are accepted will both not be going to the Blackhawk County landfill. This event keeps those items out. They work with hazardous waste company that will have a chemist there that day, kind of sorting and categorizing things to take them back to their facility, as well as a certified electronics recycling company that will be taking all of the computer monitors and TVs and cell phones and things back to their facility, breaking them down to recycle the materials inside, as well as shredding the hard drives. I know people typically have concerns about data security, and that company does shred those hard drives. This is a free event. The only kinda caveat is that if people have more than two of the CRT cathode ray tube containing old TV and computer monitors, the big bulky ones with the bump off the back, they have a cathode ray tube inside of them. So folks are allowed to bring two of those for free and any additional ones are $5 a piece after that. So for the most part, it's a free event, open up, open to all Blackhawk County residents. There is a huge list on the back of this flyer as well as available on the Solid Waste Commission's website, which is wastetrac.org. Anything from flat-screen computer monitors and TVs, laptops, game systems, posters, mixers, vacuums, that lamp that burned out, your old treadmill, all sorts of, basically any plug-in or battery-operated device that you have in your home that might not be working, as long as it's not considered an appliance, is accepted at this event as well. A full list can be found on the wastetrac.org website. Flyers like this are available at all the city halls, library, here as well, yep, and on the, the website, and our education team has a Facebook page too. So if anybody has any questions about the type of materials that can be brought to that event, you can call our education hotline, which is 266-8722, or shoot us a message on Facebook and I'll answer your question there. If I, if I may, I would like to give a big thank you to the 60 or so volunteers that we'll have on Saturday out helping at the event. We typically have 800 to 1,000 vehicles that participate in these drop-off events, and so those volunteers are the reason that the event is possible. Last fall, in Cedar Falls, typically in the spring Waterloo hosts and fall Cedar Falls hopes, we had 694 vehicles that came through and they brought 22 tons of electronics. So we, it was the same day that the Cedar Valley was flooding, so we expect to have a larger group of participants this year, so we're looking forward to that as well. And just a reminder that City of Waterloo ordinance says that all vehicles bringing items to the event need to have those materials covered or enclosed inside of a vehicle to prohibit any of those items falling from the vehicle during transport. During this event, they do not accept appliances or paint. For the paint, you just need to dry that out and throw it away. Appliances, they can contact the city, and this is not offered in conjunction with the city's, citywide cleanup. That date is set for June 17th. So if folks have mattresses and those types of materials they're looking to get rid of, they can contact the sanitation department at 291-4455 to get rid of those materials. And thank you very much for letting us kind of speak today about this event, this Saturday, April 8th, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM at the Waterloo Wastewater Treatment Plant.
All right, thank you so much Lindsey. Great job, and we look forward to having a great turnout this week, so hopefully no flooding though.
No, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have one last presentation that is not on the agenda, and I'd like to call up Mark Rice, please. Mark is a man of few words with an angelic singing voice that I recently found out. But I don't know how many of you know, you probably saw it, but Mark is retiring from the City of Waterloo. And Mark has done an excellent job for us. It's not a, it's not an easy job, working for the city, managing multiple departments, trying to make everyone happy, as well as also trying to make your own staff happy also. But I consider Mark a manager's manager. He's done excellent work here, and there's many of us that worked alongside him and can testify to that as well. So we have a plaque, and the plaque is, is, is not merely, you know, I guess, did we still do the gold watches here? Oh, that was where I came from, okay. But we do have a plaque to honor Mark, and it's presented to Mark Rice in appreciation of your service, dedication, and loyalty in serving the citizens of Waterloo as Public Works Director this April 3rd, 2017. So Mark, you've been here a while, would you say a couple words for us?
Sure, a couple words.
You got the plaque first.
You want something more than a couple words? I would just like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation and, and thanks for allowing me to serve the citizens of Waterloo first and foremost. As the mayor said, it's not always easy. And I'd also like to say that it's been a real pleasure to work with everyone that's sitting up here today. There are, in fact, a group of true professionals that truly do have the best interest of the city at heart. So I wish everybody would keep that in mind. And thank you very much Mayor Council for this proclamation or this award, and I plan to go work on my handicap and watch my grandkids grow up.
All right. All right, thank you very much, Mark.
Don't you usually say if you don't have any?
Until Friday.
Let me tell them what I said on Tuesday. All right.
Oral presentations.
All right, now it is time for oral presentations. It is your opportunity to address the city council with matters of your heart and mind. We have two guests that called in a little bit earlier. First, I'd like to call up Mr. Jim Chapman.
Hi Mayor, hi Council. First of all, I'd like to mention about two people we lost in our city this week, and my heart goes out to them, a nine-year-old little old boy that went to sleep and died in his sleep, and a principal at Lou Henry. I didn't know her, but my daughter knew her, who was a teacher, and said we all should follow her footsteps. She was a great person.
Let me get your address, Jim.
224 Birch. All right, I think it was last week Mayor, when I brought up that we got thumbs up from the governor as the fastest-growing city in the state of Iowa. And I think you mentioned that at your State of the City address. And then I mentioned that since we're the fastest-growing city in the state of Iowa, that I didn't think it was reflected on our residential taxes. And I know Mary Smith that lives on Bulliston too, and there's a lot of Mary Smiths in this town. So, and when I seen you in the hallway, you said that I was wrong, and I guess I would like to know what I was wrong about, Mayor.
Because the governor never said that, and I addressed that that day. So in the State of the City, I never said that.
Okay, can I take a quote out of the paper then there? It said, "Mayor Quentin Hart borrowed a line in the second annual State of the City address from Governor Branstad. Waterloo is the biggest comeback story." Is that right? Wouldn't that mean the same thing?
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't mean the same thing?
It means that, do you want me to take your time up, explain that right now?
Well, that's fine, that's fine.
You've got three minutes left.
That's fine.
Or do you want your three minutes?
Well, I got five minutes.
You've already talked two minutes.
Oh, have I? Well, two of my, or part of it was on something I didn't mean to talk, or to talk about. Now I can see the time. Well, I guess my other statement was, you know, you and I had a conversation about the way the voting goes, three to four, and I guess we seen it last week, and I seen it again tonight on the, on the waste management person that we haven't had for two or three years. I guess the people in my neighborhood association are watching this tonight, and they say that they know who is watching our pocketbook and our taxes by how they vote. And you and I had a conversation, sure, they don't vote the same on everything, but when it comes to the money, and if you know that the biggest money that the city has is employees, we've been without this position for two years and we didn't shut the city down, so I guess that's where the three-four vote comes in all the time. We watch it, we're keeping track of it, and I guess, like you said, if we don't like it, this fall we can vote. Is that true?
What do you, I mean, what are you, you, what conversation? I mean, you're, you're pulling out conversations that, I see, obviously you must be coming at me today because of last week.
No, I'm not coming at you, Mayor.
You got a minute forty seconds left.
I know.
And I'll let you finish.
It's a conversation you and I had on the phone one day about the three-four vote, and you said, "No, it wasn't." And I said, "It was certain items on money that the three to four vote goes." And those people, and, I mean, it's always three to four when it comes to the amount of money. It seems like we're sitting there watching, and you say, "No, it ain't." So, and I'm not coming at you, but they do vote seven, sometimes all seven of them vote the same, but when it comes to a lot of money issues, it's always three to four. And we got, we're keeping records of it, so. And like you said, you, you made the statement one time, "If we don't like it, we can vote this fall, we can vote them out." So that's where I'm coming from. Just letting you know how we feel.
How you feel?
I think my, well, no, there's a lot of other people watching TV right now that couldn't make it feel the same way I feel. And I think there's some people sitting out here that feel the same way. Yep, I'll, I'll relinquish my time. I got 30 seconds. Anything?
This is your floor.
So my floor, I, I just relinquished it, Mayor. So I mean, is that true or not true?
What?
That the three to four vote's always on the money issue, like the waste management?
No, it can be an ordinance issue. There was an ordinance issue that came up a little while ago about a setback when some lady did that. We had an ordinance issue with regards to giving back some portions, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to do that with you today. I'm gonna show you respect. You know, you are entitled to your opinion. I respect that. Every time you've ever called me, I've called you back, we've had a good rapport. So the last thing I wanna do is on public television, pretend like we haven't had a great rapport, and that's where we're going to. So I just, I just thank you for your opinion.
You're welcome.
You are entitled to that.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have, who would like to address the council, Mr. Aaron Roberts.
Hello, my name is Aaron Roberts. I live at 411 Almond Street. I have some information I would like to give to each of the city council members and the mayor. I'm here because my children itself have been victims of a long ongoing, of on, long ongoing criminal activity, which I have been to the Waterloo Police about in the past, and Mayor Ruff and Clark. We have not gotten equal or fair protection under law, nor have we gotten due process. This has caused us to live under fear and Stockholm syndrome. Because of past experience with the Waterloo Police, fell into act, and in one case, acting against us, I have been afraid to pursue these matters due to fear of retaliation. I have been receiving threats, and threats come in more than just walking up with a gun or a text message. The text, the messages that I reported last to the Waterloo Police was a case number Also, there was a case 7779. In those cases, there was a few text messages that I'm gonna read off tonight. On October 27th of 2015 at 6:48 in the morning, after texting back and forth with some person whom I couldn't get the police to nail down who this person was, they got a text that said, "How about we cut the head off that new granddaughter you got, Aaron?" November 10th, 2014, at 2:01 PM, "How about we walk right in that house and put four in your head, nigga?" September 27th of 2014, 7:55 AM, "You say this God watches over you, where was he that day in the bathroom? We could have taken her, she would have never been seen again." That's referring to a case 9914612 out of Urbandale, Iowa. January 16th, the Iowa, I got from the Iowa Civil Rights Commission, complaint number 091364817, sent me an administrative right-to-sue letter. February 20th of 2013, Director of Safety Services sent a letter and police prohibited me from City Hall. February 14th, I was committed to Mary Greeley Hospital for being seriously mentally impaired based on lies told by then-Mayor Buck Clark and Safety Director Dan Treckel and Sharice Atkins, whom I've never met before in my life knowingly. Waterloo Police Officers Sean Bram and others. This meeting was to address my on, the ongoing corruption that has caused me and my children to be extorted and live under duress. That's what the meeting was for. On February 13th, 2013, in an affidavit to support involuntary, involuntary commitment, Dan Treckel lied and gave fake facts in an affidavit to have me committed. He used people that I had told him failed to do their job in the past, and some had acted against us. Waterloo Police Officer Sean Bram was one. He stated in an email in his support, "Thank you for your diligence in this, Chief. I have dealt with Roberts back when I was on third shift. He's crazy and violent." There's not a report in Waterloo or the state of Iowa or in the United States of America where I have been arrested for being violent. And I could say Sean Bram was crazy for making a statement, so that's just something you throw out there. A Waterloo Police Officer newly lied and stated that in an email I addressed, "I attend A Waterloo Police Officer newly lied and stated that in an email I addressed, "I attended every East High basketball game," and I didn't, nor did Abraham Funchess's son play for East High. Abraham Funchess is my neighbor, and I think he has a great son. He played for West High. Tim Luce, an attorney for my father until February of 1994, the 15th, when he passed away. He then became the attorney for my mother on the 17th of February until the estate was closed. In an email from, and I'm going to skip down in there, he went on to say that no attorney would assist me, and none had said that there was any facts to what I was going through. But in a letter from Dave Dutton, a notable attorney in Waterloo in 99, he stated that John Deers was just giving us the runaround by not supplying the requested information. And in this, I had listed Tim Luce as a person of interest in having information on my case. Do I need to stop now?
If you want to close, like, close on what you, what you, what you'd like to see so we can move on.
Okay. Uh, what, that's, that's good. And what I, the reason that I supplied you, but that five minutes went quick, the reason I supplied you the information, because this is going back over twenty years worth of information. I gave you the same information I'm reading off. I would like for you to take a look at the information and see what we can get done about this, because what you addressed it, we addressed early in the meeting. In the case 9914612, which came from out of Waterloo, a person went in the restroom of my then-eleven-year-old daughter and stuck his finger in her vagina and said, "Tell your father..."
Come on, Stan.
I'm just telling you what was said.
Right, but I mean, you don't have to be so graphic right now, just if you, if you, you want us to...
I'm gonna say that what I would like for you to do is take a look at it, read all the information, and, I mean, graphic is graphic, Quinn, but this is what's going on. And it's been a cover-up, and I'm asking that the city of Waterloo take a look at it and play your part. Have a good evening, and thanks for your time.
Is there anyone else?
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. When is the next Avenue of Saints, or the University Avenue meeting? Please don't wait till the 11th hour. Put out plenty of notices. If you really want the public's input, you'll put out plenty of publications and some details on what we'd get for $40 million. Comment forms are great, but hard to know what to comment on without some detail. Second thing, as I stated in the letter, as was stated in the letter to the editor, I have to agree about recycle gate. By the way, it was said to the people to use the large containers, which was suggested as an option, or did they also go to the landfill instead of going to have, have to go clear the Cedar Rapids? We had a recycle system there. Couldn't we get with those people and have cost us less if they were still recycling rather than landfilling it? I understand that this is a done deal. However, having kept notes on the city's expenditures, announced each week, the forty years, forty million or so spoken budget, which is actually for the last twelve months, ending March, ending in March, was 137,256,000, $600,000. Yeah, plus or minus. So, I divided that into the 63,000 for 10,000 residents at $6, and found that is 000, .000 48% of the expenses. I recall hearing that 63,000 would put the budget in the bind. If this is so, so, Mr. Mayor, is the city bankrupt? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening, Todd Opald, 124 Amity Drive. There are differing opinions in regards to what the city should do or should not do on certain things or how it should be done, and that's time we debate and discuss those things and decide what we are going to do and how we're going to do it. I think there is, at that point, once the political discussion ends, I think the city pretty much unites around the idea that whatever we decide to do actually gets done and that we find a way to, to do it. Last week, we learned that the recycling program of Waterloo is a money loser. We also learned from the head of the Department of Public Works and at least one of the council members that there's no guarantee that recycling will actually take place. This came as news to a lot of people in the city of Waterloo. The way I see it, that looks like a lose-lose proposition to me. It's costing us money, and we're not actually recycling. City recycling should be about recycling, not merely a make-work endeavor at the citizens' expense. I'd like to take this opportunity to ask the city council to consider searching for a private outside contractor to take care of the city's recycling. For losing money, and we're not guaranteeing that the work actually gets done, let's find somebody to guarantee the citizens that the work does get done and take this expense off the books, preferably before the next fiscal year starts. We can be, have that private, private organization be bound by contract to guarantee that the service gets provided. And if they don't provide that service, we can hold them accountable, and we don't wind up suing ourselves when something doesn't get done. And I would like to just close by saying, I think any sort of private enterprise could actually hand out refunds at a cost of less than $6 apiece. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, receive and file oral comments.
Second. Okay, well, before we do that, we have mayor and council monthly reports. So, council, what's happening in your world?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just for the sake of it, conversation about Ward Three, I think that Jerome Amos and myself are, are trying to put together some conjoined meetings here, and I think our first one is going to be hopefully in June sometime, where Ward Three and Ward Four will get together at the Waterloo Public Library. The last time, as I mentioned, I think before, we got together and we had a joint meeting. There was about 45 people there, and it was quite active. People were involved, and it was great to hear last, last Thursday, we had a meeting, and many green, people from Greenbrier showed up, and their issue out there has to do with the water table. And they were very appreciative of the fact that Sherman Lundey from BNC was there, and he's a, jowled issues also with the Black Hawk County Soil and Water Conservation Group to explain what he understood was going on. Lori from the IDNR was there, as well as Dennis Gents blessed us with his presence from City Engineering to go over that issue. Again, that was very well attended. Greenbrier had a good presence there, and we look for more information on that water table, because we're, through Sherman Lundey, we're given other references. So, those meetings are, they've been very good meetings, and I hope that Jerome and myself can have one together in June.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, following up on the State of City address, there were some folks that wanted to be there, couldn't make it. So, we had a, I want to thank you for presenting, and the folks are really thankful. We had kind of like a miniature State of the City address at Friendship Village and Landmark Commons, very well attended, and abundance of questions from the folks, and you did a fine job, and they were very appreciative of being able to get up and close with, with our mayor, so I thank you for doing that.
All right, thank you for organizing that. There were some interesting questions, too, so people are paying attention. Is there anyone else that would like to give an update?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Andrews.
One of the things in Ward Four, I, I feel like I'd be a little bit remiss if I didn't mention this, but we have two businesses that are actually, one of them is having a grand opening this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then we also have the Herald's Chicken Place that is supposed to be opening tomorrow at 11:00 AM. So, a couple of businesses that'll hopefully do well in our community and move, help move things forward.
One of those spellers, True Value?
Yes.
It's at April 7th at what, 10:00 AM, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On somewhat of a lighter note, I'd just like to invite people to come and watch me make some kind of blank out of myself on, on this coming Saturday. I get to play...
What time?
It's, it's, it's the Honor Flight fundraiser out at Electric Park Ballroom, and I get to be Sonny Bono singing "I Got You Babe" with Marcia Butch, who's going to be Cher. So, a little bit lighter, I hope.
That's a very good call.
Yes, very, very good call.
Anyone else?
Motion to receive and file oral comments.
Second. Motion made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Okay, like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's items one through three, and within that is the bill's payment. The bill's payment this week, $2,474,802.46. Two comma, four, seven, four, comma, eight, zero, two, point, four, six.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
Number 1A9, I have a question for Eric. Could we apply those, that solution to that lady on Denver Street? She lives on an unimproved street, and she put a driveway in the right-of-way.
Eric Thorsting on, excuse me, Eric Thorsting on Denver Street?
Hawthorne. Huh? I think it's Hawthorne, Councilman. Is it Hawthorne? Well, Hawthorne and Denver Society Street.
Well, this is, this is a waiver not to put the sidewalk section in a drive approach, and those folks on Hawthorne had the same waiver already, so.
Okay.
They're, they're in the same situation. Their other situation doesn't relate to this.
Okay, well, I just spotted that, and I thought maybe that was a solution for her. Thank you.
No.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Right in here. Someone take number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the amendment to the City of Waterloo's zoning ordinance number 5079 regarding billboard and off-premise advertising, residential fence coverings, regulations for indoor and outdoor recreational uses, floodway regulations, drainage and detention facilities, wireless communication facilities, and other miscellaneous updates.
Second. That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that has questions about this particular item?
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I guess a little bit of explanation, like, what's a restricted fence cover? Indoor, out recreation, indoor and outdoor recreational uses? Billboards such as the pole is on a private property, but the sign is in, on the encroachment, so is that going to be approved to be okay? Because I know that came up a couple, three minutes ago. You know, just a, a brief explanation, what's a restricted fence cover? Is a billboard that the pole is on their property okay? Is the sign okay then, because it encroaches over on the encroachment area? And what can't I do or can I do indoor recreation?
Any other questions?
That's it.
All right, if you would step out the way, I'll ask Mr. Schrader, let Mr. Schrader give us just a brief overview of this.
Eric Schrader, city planner, trying to address a couple of the questions in there and then provide a brief overview of the proposed amendment regarding billboards. That language is specific for off-premise advertising signs and wouldn't affect the, doesn't address a sign that would kind of encroach over the right-of-way. That would not be permitted and would require a separate encroachment agreement, as the recent one being referenced had to go through the approval process to get an encroachment agreement, and that was an existing sign that was already encroaching. Regarding the fence materials covering, there's, within the definition of a fence, there's a list of some items that are not allowed on a fence, and we are just adding to that, adding slats, tarp, cloth, mesh, or similar coverings. So, the entire section will now read that the fence shall not include corrugated sheet metal, slats, tarp, cloth, mesh, or similar coverings, barbed wire, Constantino wire, or similar wire, salvaged materials, or be electrified. So, it's addressing what types of residential fences are permitted or not permitted. Regarding the recreational uses, as it sits right now, the zoning ordinance regulates them in several different sections of the zoning ordinance, and it regulated them not very consistently. So, what the proposed amendment is trying to do is to kind of clean it up and essentially put all the types of recreational uses into essentially two different types of classifications, indoor recreational uses, which are generally principally permitted in a commercial district, and outdoor recreational uses, which are permitted in multiple, multiple districts but require special permit approval. So, for instance, a golf course is permitted in almost any district, but it requires special permit approval. So, it was just kind of cleaning that up. And then the floodway regulations is just cleaning up where a detention or retention facility, if it's a permitted use in a floodway, that was interpreted as being a permitted use as long as it otherwise meets the floodplain regulations. There was an appeal on that interpretation, but the city of Waterloo was successful in defending that appeal in district court. So, that's just kind of cleaning it up so it's in line with how it's already been interpreted. The amendment is like thirty-some pages, but it's really mostly fairly minor, not real significant changes. That's a real brief overview. Happy to answer any other specific questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to ask questions about this particular item or have comments? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second. That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion received, filed, considered, and passed the first time. An ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 is amended, City Waterloo zoning ordinance, by amending section 10-3-1, definition billboard and fence, residential section 10-8-1, parentheses A, parentheses four, and parentheses 10. R-1 district principal permitted uses, section 10-14-1, parentheses A, parentheses three. C-1 district principal permitted uses, sections 10-15-1, parentheses A. C-2 district principal permitted uses, section 10-22-2, parentheses A. Floodway overlay district principal permitted uses, section 10-22-2, parentheses B. Floodway overlay district conditional uses, section 10-26-1, parentheses B. Definition, section 10-26-1, parentheses C. Regulation of all signs, section 10-27-1, parentheses H, parentheses six, and parentheses seven. Special permit required, section 10-27-1, parentheses O. Towers and wireless communication facilities.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Right in here.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we have a question, Eric, timeliness of this? Have all the potential people that could be affected by this been contacted, or would it behoove us to take our time on this?
We don't really have a good mechanism for trying to directly contact everyone. I'm not aware of anything real critical from a timeline regarding this amendment, so I don't think it would, it would be fine if the rules were not suspended.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Whopper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lynn?
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 718 Kern Street in the amount of $80,000 to Lika Jones.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is now closed. Motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, could we just have an overview of this? I don't know. Is this one we've talked about recently, or is this a different one?
Rudy Jones, Community Development Director. Back over a year ago, the city received this property from Wells Fargo Distribution Program where they gave us the property plus about $10,000 offered to a number of nonprofits, which we chose to take it on as a pilot project. After we viewed this particular site, we realized that it was the only one on that block that was vacant, and in order to stabilize our community and our neighborhoods, we thought it'd be a good opportunity for us to take that project on and rehab it and offer it to an affordable family.
What process did you go through to determine who the recipient was?
We hired a realtor that marketed the property as such, and when individuals would contact him, they would go through an eligibility process that determined if they were eligible to meet our guidelines and thus receive the funds.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, right in here. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Whopper.
Number four is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. That's for the 2017 spring stump removal project.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Right in here.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution confirming approval of bid documents, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost, et cetera.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Like to make a motion for a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Right in here. Like to make a motion for a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Our bid estimate was $13,500, and we received one bid from Electronic Engineering of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $13,496.71.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a word of contract to Electronic Engineering of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $13,496.71 for the fiscal year 2017, police vehicle equipment needs, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Right in here.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, instruct city clerk to read bids, and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Our estimate for this was $60,000. Our first bidder was Dix Petroleum Company of Tripola, Iowa. They provided 5% security in the form of a check. Their bid amount was $40,576.53. Our second bidder was Actera Group of Marion, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $47,800. And our third bidder was Central Petroleum Equipment of Bluegrass, Iowa. They provided 5% security, and their bid amount was $45,015.
All right, thank you. All right, could someone take seven and eight, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving Convention and Visitors Bureau Board Recommendations for Funding in the Event-Capital-Hotel-Motel Tax Grant Funds for Fiscal Year 2018. And number eight, a resolution awarding bid in the amount of $126,847 to Altech Industries of Creedmoor, North Carolina, for the purchase of one aerial boom truck to support traffic department operations.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk, seven and eight.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Yes, except on number seven, the line item for BGM Heartland, because I work there, I would want to abstain from that vote. That line item only, but yes, on everything else.
And Mr. Lind?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone say nine and 10, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number nine is adopting a resolution awarding bids in conjunction with the 2017 right-of-way mowing project to B&amp;B Lawn Care, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $44.95 per acre. per acre. Option A and $56.65 per acre. Option E, Professional Lawn Care of LC of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $55.50 per acre. Option B, and Wilson's Custom Tree of Cresco, Iowa, in the amount of $27.75 per acre. Option C, and $574 per acre. Option D, and approving the contract, certificate of insurance, et cetera, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreements.
Second.
And item number 10...
I'm sorry.
That's okay, buddy. Item number 10 is adopting a resolution approving a contract with Terricon for geotechnical engineering services within the midpoint area in an amount not to exceed $6,550, and authorize community planning director to execute said document.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions on these two items? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right. Those items carry. All right. Eleven, twelve, eleven, twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. Eleven, a resolution approving an agreement for animal control service between the University of Northern Iowa Department of Public Safety and the City of Waterloo. And number 12, a resolution approving professional service agreement with JDE Engineering of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount not to exceed $113,160 for construction-related services for the fiscal year 2017 site grading for Northeast Industrial Park Contract Number 926, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
For Sandy, on that animal control services contract, are we charging them the same as we're charging Cedar Falls?
Sandy?
Are we?
Sandy Greco, Superintendent Traffic. Yes, we are. It'll be in the same amount that Cedar Falls has been approached for a rate increase starting July.
Okay, so in other words, we've decided to...I mean, we're analyzing what cost per by this service and made the adjustments.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. My question is on number 11. Will this be done with existing personnel, or if another employee is needed, are income monies proposed available to support that employee's wages and benefits?
Existence.
This will not...we will not be hiring any more officers to cover this.
Okay, so this could be an added income to the city. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
That item carries. Number 13, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to Minturn Incorporated of Brooklyn, Iowa in the amount of $1,491,713, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the fiscal year 2017. Forest Street Bridge Canopy Repairs, base bid plus alternate number one, contract number 910, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. We've been talking about this already. Any questions?
It's me again, David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. My question on that is, what is included in alternate number one? If this is a replacement of the windows as well, I hope there aren't change orders in store. Apparently, suggestion of saving the $100,000 for cost overruns was ignored. Thank you.
Did you have a question?
Yeah. I think you asked if the glass...
If the glass was in.
You asked if the glass was in, I think.
Yes, it is. The glass is in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I did just want to say briefly, I know I got an email, I think maybe some of the rest you had also, from a downtown business owner, property owner. And she mentioned a council member had said that all downtown business people were opposed to that. I don't know if some other council members said that, but I know I said, I talked to people on both sides, but I said I had heard more opposition and support of it. So, I just wanted to clear the air on that. I wasn't sure if she had some misinformation or not, so I just wanted to get that out there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right. Number 14, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property located east of 3808...or 3308 Bayberry Drive.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Madam Counsel, any questions? Noel, did you have something to say on this?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, working with the developer on this project and their timeline moving ahead. We would ask that you pass the second reading tonight and then table item number 16 for one week, so that can coincide with the third reading.
Questions about that, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, but I thought we talked to the developer's engineer, and we kind of agreed we're going to pass them both tonight.
And he is in attendance tonight, too, and I believe he's in concert with what we're saying. There's a few details we're working on on the preliminary plat that we'd like another week on.
So, that's what they want?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
That item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion's been made with the second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a real quick question. So, then, the next motion is to suspend the second and third. That's not what you're asking for right now. You're just asking to suspend the second.
Number 16.
We're on the third.
But not the third. But that's one motion. How are you planning on splitting that? It's a motion to pass the second and third.
We did the first last week. Second on this one, and then this one is just the third time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this is the first time we've done this. No mistake. All right.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Mr. Mayor, I'm confused. I thought Noel just said we were supposed to not suspend the rules.
Pass it for the second time.
He wants it passed for the second time.
Pat, he wants it passed for the second time, and then table, table.
Not suspend.
Not suspend. So, not suspend the rules. Thank you.
So, we're not suspending the rules.
We're not.
So, you'd want to know when to suspend the rules if you want to do what Noel said.
No. No. Oh, I'm sorry. I was misunderstood, too. I'm no...I'm suspending the rules.
Okay.
So, wait, Tom and Tom are no?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Whopper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Number 15.
Mr. Mayor?
Anybody? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and consider and pass for the first time, an ordinance amending the 2007 City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by adding to Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic a new Chapter VII Parking in Residential Areas.
Second.